All right, we'll call this meeting to order whether Vincent was ready for it or not. First, we have a public hearing this evening that is up on the agenda. And that is a public hearing of the council of the city of Buchanan regarding proposed enactment of ordinance 473 of the city of Buchanan and ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number 244 of the city of Buchanan by rezoning certain properties on South Canal Street, Putnam Street, and Morning Drive from the current R1 single-family residential district to a C2 highway commercial district. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak on this subject matter? Going once, going twice. Is there a motion to close the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting? Motion by Mr. Ricker, is there a second? Second by Mr. Sanders. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. Motion carries unanimously. The public hearing has been concluded. We will take up the item under our business items in just a little bit. Now, we will call our regularly scheduled meeting to order at 7:02 PM and ask that you take a moment to reflect silently, and then we will say the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that you approve the meeting minutes. We have a set from 3:20.
That's the only one.
Okay. Would you please pass those as presented if you have no additions or corrections? Motion by Scott, second by Rob. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, likes signed? Motion carries. Okay. Recognition of guests that have signed in or when the time the agenda was printed, let us know they wish to speak. We have Jody Light from the Almost Heaven Barbecue Bash.
Thank you, Mayor and council members and everyone here, as a matter of fact. Just wanted to give you a kind of a quick wrap-up, and I won't go into a lot of details. Council, you have in front of you a kind of a summary. I tried to make it short, sweet, to the point as to what we hope we accomplish. And I do want to say a few things to some of those folks who are here I would like to thank. I want to thank you as the city council members and the mayor for your generous financial support and the city's support of the event. Secondly, I want to thank Ethan Kozak back here and his Public Works Department, JB and the Fire Department. I don't see any police here, but they did a tremendous job. Public Works Department helped set up power lines, water lines, banners. They got food vendors in their new spots. There just was a definite deviation from the past in the last, what, three weeks? We had two weeks to completely re-engineer where we were going to put all the food vendors. Most of them were happy. We had a couple of more because they didn't have their prime spot. But, you know, you get lemon, you make lemonade, and that's what we did, and we hope it went as well as it could be. So I want to thank everyone involved with the city from top to bottom. I mean, we tried to do well by them, and I hope they did. We invited them to our VIP dinner. Several of you came. We appreciate that. We invited them to have breakfast with us on Saturday morning, and some of them got to eat. We actually sent some ribs out to the Police Department and the Fire Department, and we sent a lot of food over to the Police and Fire Department. So hopefully, they got to try some different foods and things like that and enjoyed it. The city sponsorship, which we greatly appreciate, was used to do the majority of the cash prizes. We give away eleven or twelve thousand, and that generous donation you did basically funded that. In addition, I think it's just really important, this was our 10th year anniversary, and we were determined to make an event that everything was free. It was tough. We had to get a lot of sponsorships and such, but that's why I wanted to give you a list of those things. Everything in our event, other than the one balloon guy, and he was on his own, was charging for his things. But we were really tickled to be able to give away three shows of the Dino Roar Show, which is not cheap, on Friday and Saturday, and there were three shows per day. We had the Butterfly and the Ladybug Exhibits. They were totally free, came out of Florida. We were excited to have the West Virginia DEP and DNR Mobile Aquarium. It was amazing how many people got to see fish that are native to West Virginia, and there were people on deck there to answer questions and so forth. The Laurel Falconer, who had owls and hawks and different things. He does a great display, but he also does those, what do they call them, where they're coming back on his arm? I forget what they call it. But anyway, he did those demos and was quite interesting. We also provided all free entertainment. We had Blue Steel, Gospel, Bluegrass Group on Thursday. We had the BU Community Band, which was very well-received and did a very nice job on Friday evening, followed by a classic rock group called The Rocks Band appropriately. And then Saturday evening, we had Corey Hager with the Country Music Star. All these were West Virginia-based groups as well. And then we, if you didn't see our 10-foot-tall, custom-decorated Charm City cake, and I know you were there, and several of you I saw there, was pretty interesting. We had a lot of post photo ops with the cake. We did all of our awards recognition and that kind of presentation in front of the cake, so it went really well. In addition, we also paid and distributed, offered a thousand sugar cookies with our logo on it to all the kids, adults, or whoever wanted them during the time. Rather than me go on and on and tell you how great I think it was, I mean, really, I think the people need to tell you that. So that's why the next two or three pages of your information here is not a quiz. They're wrong. These are just some of the comments that we had gotten and the feedback we got from the different, and I tried to do a random sampling. There was a lot more, but there were teams, there were judges. Nice thing to say, you know, a guy from Connecticut saying, you know, you made the drive from Connecticut worthwhile, see you next year. He'd never been here before. We had a team from New Hampshire, too. Thought it was really interesting on the first page towards the bottom that Giovanni's, a restaurant in Weston, of all things, wrote a wonderful thing about how happy they are that we bring the event to Buchanan, which packs their restaurant every single year despite it being in Buchanan. I thought that was a good thing. The bottom one, Luke Darnell commented, we did something different. We also did a window display thing this year. And we had, I think, eight or 10 that signed up orders, completely free for the businesses, but we gave them money, which we haven't done yet because we have teams and judges that are still waiting. They couldn't get around to do it while they were here, so they got pictures and they're making their judgment. We didn't even deal with judging the windows because we didn't want someone to say, well, you like to go there? So we'll take that. But it was really nice to see some of the, several of the downtown businesses, even off Main Street, actually put in really nice window displays. Some were fun and whimsical. Sherry Louie had a great time doing those. We really appreciated seeing that. But that fellow particularly mentioned, he said, I love seeing the window displays, the local coverage. It's how a barbecue contest should be done. You know, another one from Ohio, never been here before, said, you know, he was so glad. He's coming back. It's nice to see those. One fellow came from Griffin, Georgia. He's been here before, two, three years ago, I guess it was. It was nice. He went to a contest in southern West Virginia, brought his rig over, and I met him on Monday. He stayed in the trailer court over here all week. And if you've watched Facebook, you might have seen, he did a wonderful video of downtown. And I mean, he went through storefronts, and he went through all, as well as barbecue, and he highlighted a lot of restaurants and businesses. I think Katie probably, you probably saw that one, didn't you? A really nice little video he did of town and talking about how what a warm welcome they had in hospitality in Buchanan and West Virginia. And he was from Georgia, so I thought that was a nice one. The one from Michigan, at the very bottom of the second page, he'd never been here before, but he was excited about it and talking about the great cooks that, they know who the competitors are, and they know that they have some really tough competition, and he's planning on coming back. And JB, there's a shout-out in here for you. It says, a big shout-out to the Buchanan Fire Department for spending time with our boys from one of the barbecue teams. I don't know what they did, but I don't know what they-
I let them drive the fire truck.
Oh, no, they're the ones that came rolling down through barricades. I'm not. But anyway.
Thank you, please.
Yeah, there you go. I'll have to find out what that was, but he did a shout-out to you guys. But there was just a lot of really, really good comments, and I figured better than, you know, Jody talking about, let the people that came and enjoyed speak for itself. So if you have any comments or questions, I'll be glad to answer any. We appreciate getting your support, and hopefully that'll continue and move on to bigger and better things. We already have plans underway for next year.
This is Professor Smoak from Connecticut. That's the town I grew up in, Louisville.
Seriously? How neat, real nice town.
It's as small as Buchanan. It's not like a huge, very small.
And he's been here once before.
Yeah, I talked to him last year, just when I saw this in Louisiana.
Wayne Dur, yeah, that's him. Any comments, questions, thoughts?
Any questions or comments from council?
I had a great time.
Thank you.
It's good to see the tough competition is there, and we've got multiple folks that are saying that they're going to return, and that's the whole point.
That's what it is. And when you have someone that comes in and stays a week, you know, and we've had some others come in and do that a little bit, but not as long. But he stayed over here, and he was all over town. He has a segue he rides, and he was doing videos and all kinds of stuff. So that's what we want to do. It's bringing tax dollars here, and hopefully it rolls over to the conference for other things.
We appreciate all the hard work you've put in.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
How can I see that video?
I think I got to be barbecued out by the time Saturday came. Went Thursday dinner, Friday lunch, Friday dinner. All right. Thank you, Jody. Okay, Jen, you're up.
Great. I am literally just here for questions to ensure that if you have any lingering doubts, thoughts, feelings you want to express, it's what I'm here for.
I just wanted to, is there any more confirmation on what the plan would be with the number of folks each year?
Yeah, good question. So right now, we have one student already from community care that has not only applied, has been interviewed, has been accepted, and is going to enroll. So we already have the first one on the books, and we're looking at at least two or three more in that community care group. But I'll tell you, several of them just said, hmm, let's wait and see what the city does because they were really interested in being able to use not only the city's funding for it, but absolutely their own funding in their professional development as well.
We do want to clarify, just for the media presence sake, the funding that is going to West Virginia Westland College for this project, for this scholarship, for this program, is earmarked money. It is not general fund money that the council has elected to invest with Westland. The opioid settlement funds that are coming into municipalities and counties across West Virginia are specifically earmarked toward helping communities to manage and to recover from significant abuse of opioid, the epidemic that has been poured into these communities across West Virginia. This money has come to the city of Buchanan. We anticipate to receive more money coming to the city of Buchanan, but it has to be used for something like this. It cannot be used to improve a park. It cannot be used to pave a street. It cannot be used to build a water plant. It is specific. It is separate. It is not general fund money. It is not an enterprise board set of funds. Just wanted to make sure that that is clarified so that anyone watching, anyone reading, understands that, no, the city is not trying to elevate water rates so we can give all of our money to West Virginia Westland College for this program. It is specific. It has been laid out for this, and so that's, I just wanted to make sure that that's understood.
That's really well said, Robbie. Can I add just one piece to that?
Sure.
I would say that you've got to spend it, too.
Yes.
Like, there is going to be pressure very soon. If you haven't already received some of this unofficially already, from not just the West Virginia First Foundation, but really some of the judges that are overseeing these funds as they get distributed.
Right.
They're going to take a really hard look, folks, at municipalities that are spending it, how they're spending it, and really, really looking at folks that aren't spending anything. So I think folks that are going to be in a really hard pinch as we get ready to re-up for this next cycle of funds that are supposed to be distributed are those that have kind of hemmed and hawed a little too long and haven't spent any of it. They could really see either drastic reductions or just not having funding in the second cycle until they can prove that they have a plan for how they're going to use these towards, like you said, specifically toward opioid abuse.
We would liken this something similar to the COVID funds that came into communities across West Virginia. Those were specifically aimed toward infrastructure improvement projects with the city, which the city of Buchanan went through the proper process. Jay, AMBI, Potestin Associates, we allocated those funds toward water and sewer project updates throughout our city, so we used those the correct way. But we saw here in our community where those funds weren't used properly, and that entity got in a lot of big trouble. So we have to, you're exactly right. We have to be very careful with these funds. We are investing them into a proactive approach with Westland, so that's our plan, that's our goal, and so that's how we're, that's how we plan to proceed. So thank you for partnership, and I know we've got some, a lot more discussions ahead that don't necessarily need to take place in a public forum like this, but, you know, to get this off the ground and get rolling. But does anybody have any questions for Jen while she's here right now, in addition to Scott's question?
And doing a note, Brian Thorne is also joining us as well. Do we have questions?
We've given you a two-year commitment. Is that correct? Fifty thousand per year?
That's right.
Because the headline, and I think my Buchanan said $100,000, and I think they put in their stance for a two-year program. There are a lot of folks that just read captions, and I think that needs to be clarified.
That's all I have.
Thank you for watching.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a happy Fourth of July. All right. Dr. Reese, you don't have anything?
No.
All right. Switched up the order a little bit on the agenda tonight. We have first up Senator Tom O'Neill who's joining us, I believe, on the phone this evening.
I am, thank you, Mayor.
First, we thought that would be good with ordinance 473 quickly following that public hearing. So, Mr. O'Neill, I will defer to you.
I'd be happy to do that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Council has beforeed ordinance number 473 of the city of Buchanan and ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 244 of the city of Buchanan by rezoning certain properties from R1 single-family residential district to C2 highway commercial district. This is the third of three readings. These are properties, as we've discussed previously, on South Canal Street, on Putnam Street, and on Morning Drive, kind of the second row back from Route 20 South of lots.
Are there any questions for Mr. O'Neill? This ordinance has not changed. This is now the three, the third and final reading. Once again, we will note that no one was present for the public hearing to speak either for or against this ordinance. So at this time, I would ask for your motion to approve ordinance 473, amending the zoning ordinance 244 on its third and final reading this evening. Does it move? The motion by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zuliani. Any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, I will call that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. That motion carries unanimously. Mr. O'Neill, thank you for your work on that ordinance.
My pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have any, Ryan Thorne is still on the phone, joining us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have any thoughts or any comments about the West Virginia Westland College Addiction Counseling Program from your desk, Mr. O'Neill?
Well, I think it's certainly ripe for consideration by the council. It's properly on the agenda and ready for a motion. By way of, just to kind of restate, the details of the program is, has been discussed previously. Upsher County residents working in an Upsher County facility, and again, this is a graduate certificate program. So these are people that already have master's degrees that are eligible for this program. 4,500, again, for Upsher County residents working in a facility in Upsher County. 3,500 if they are a non-Upsher County resident working in a facility in Upsher County. This is again on top of Community Care's commitment for $2,000 for each of its own employees of the program, and Wesleyan's stated commitment to reduce the, reduce the tuition for the program, for scholarship recipients by 15%. This is a $50,000 appropriation for the 25-26 academic year and a $50,000 appropriation for the 26-27 academic year. The ordinary councils cannot bind future councils, and a future council takes office on July 1 of 2026, so I recommend that the second $50,000 disbursement take place in late June of next year to avoid budget issues, but we can work that out through AMBI, and I'd be happy to take any questions if there are any.
So is the official action tonight to go ahead and allocate that first round of funding?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any more?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Tom, is it to allocate the entire amount of $100,000?
It's to permit the amount of $100,000 and then disperse it on a, you know, whatever schedule AMBI would work out of, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay, thank you. Just clarifying.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments relative to this discussion? Hearing the need for none, I will ask for a motion for the council of the city of Buchanan to allocate $100,000 total, splitting that $100,000 sum over the course of two years at $50,000 apiece to West Virginia Westland College for the addiction counseling program using our opioid funds from the lawsuit settlement. Motion from Jack, second by Randy. Any further discussion?
I'll stay.
Hearing the need for none, I will call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. Motion carries, noting Mr. Scott Randall's abstention. Jen Randall is his sister. All right. Mr. O'Neill, do you have anything else for us under your report this evening?
Nothing for tonight. Actually, I noticed that Chief Kimball is there. He is, I have a, he has asked me a question. I have an answer due to him, and I will get him. I just wanted to overhear that I'll get him that answer tomorrow.
Okay, sounding good. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have our financial report with Mrs. Amberlee Jenkins. How are you this evening? Did you survive the crossover? The stroke of midnight comes on June 30, and we-
I'm tired.
Turned into a pumpkin.
I think I turned into this, too. But, so I'm going to give you sort of financial report for June, how we ended our year, and on down during the budget, we've got a resolution and a revision for the new budget because of how we came over from the old budget. General fund money market and checking, we ended the year at $1,453,000. We have a CD at $89,000. Historic landmark savings at $3,000. Coal tax at $40,512. Municipal stabilization $970,000. Flood control $78,000. Consolidated Public Works Board $203,000, and there's a cemetery CD of $241,000. Sales taxes at $1,331. American Rescue Plan, we've got that almost all spent, $48,840. And the opioid account we were just talking about is at $151,773. The expenditures for June were $866,000, and the revenues were $955,000. So we came out 89 to the good with the month of June. The, I want to point out a few of the bills we paid. You have an entire list in there, but the ones I want to point out to you. Larry Gregory, the final payment for the fireworks that we're going to have tomorrow night, $5,000. David Howe, again, auditors are now working on our audit for 6:30-25. So it was a progress billing of $4,092. Tyler Technologies, NCO Software, yearly maintenance, $11,581. J.F. Allen, paving Lincoln, Maple, Randolph, and Railroad, $113,475. Sislac Truck Repair Labor, parts and labor for the Street Department vehicle, $4,800. RDR Energy, concrete for Island Avenue, Pocahontas, street sidewalks, $4,100. Appalachian Equipment, excavator rental, $2,000. Appalachian Equipment, purchase of an excavator, $47,700. Ben Erisman, $4,200 for mowing city lots for two weeks. And then trade works for curbs on Pocahontas Street, $20,300. That's that part of the report.
Any questions or comments for AMBI? I entertain a motion that we approve the, we approve the payment of our bills. Motion by Scott, second by Rob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. Motion carries. Okay, keep on going down. Now we're going to look at the loan renewal approval.
Okay, for the concrete truck, we have to renew the loans. We are municipality. We have to renew them every year. This one is with First Community Bank. The concrete truck will actually be paid off next year, so we won't have to go through this episode again. But until then, we need to, you need to authorize that you do want to renew it, and then the second part of that is that you authorize me to sign the renewal for that money. So, B and C.
I will note that this loan is in existence and long predates me as a loan officer at First Community Bank, and as AMBI noted, it will be paid off next year. It's been renewed every year that we've had it, which is a requirement. So I'd entertain a motion that we approve the loan renewal with First Community Bank for the concrete mixer. Motion by Randy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. Motion carries. I'd also entertain a motion that we approve AMBI Jenkins as the signatory for the loan renewal for the concrete mixer.
Simple. Stack it.
Everybody wants it. Let's go, Scott and Thomas. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Likes unopposed. Motion carries. All right. Now, we go down to some budget revisions.
Yes. So this is the first budget revision for general fund, and then you'll have coal tax on the agenda as well. This is required. We have to have these budget revisions recognizing what we actually came into the new year with compared to what we estimate if we come into the new year with. So we have to get those revisions done now, per state auditor's office. So when we worked on the budget back in March, we estimated that we'd come into the new year with general fund balance on hand at $750,000. We actually came in with $1 million, as I just reported, $453 in money market and checking, and then we have this CD out there at $89,000. That total is $1,542,581. So less the $750 that we already built the budget on, that leaves $792,581 to reallocate within this budget. Another thing that we need to do that also enhances this budget a bit, you'll recall the Stalker Youth Center has donations and fundraisers over the past several years for the youth center project. Some of the donors have asked for refunds of that, and we've taken care of that in the previous fiscal year. So now we're into a new year. I didn't have a line item allocated like I did last year for renewal, you know, because we were going to pay on projects. So we were doing the refunds out of that project line item. So this year, I, that money was completely restricted. It couldn't be used for anything but what we intended, what was intended for. So the remaining funds there are $307,708. So I have to bring that over as restricted funds, as like a, another kind of balance on hand, but it's very restricted. It was already restricted within our budget. And then I have to insert a line item down at the bottom to expense that. So you're going to see an income of $307,708, and down in the bottom of this revision, you're going to see an expenditure of $307,708. So that leaves the total amount that I have to work with is $1,100,289. So we'll start with where we're recommending this, how these be allocated. Expenses. So under expenses, we had a pay increase for the code enforcement officer, and that was not accounted for prior to the budget that was approved. So when he got his pancreas, I had to go back and readjust those wages, plus some benefits, which is good. We did, because we had, we had a couple things in error there. So it's about $11,000 of that. He didn't get an $11,000 pay increase. It was some other issues in that, in that same line, line item for something. Under data processing, we had- Under data processing, we hadn't selected a new IT firm at the time, so we are adding twenty-one thousand dollars in the data processing line item to take care of that. One recommendation that, this is a question to council if they want to accept this, is to transfer that eighty-nine thousand one sixty-seven that we have in a CD to municipal stabilization. So that would take that municipal stabilization over a million dollars. You can take up to thirty percent of municipal sta, of your budget can be municipal stabilization. Under street projects, and we'll circle back to that other line item, but under street projects, when we developed the budget at the time, we were told by Street Department, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars would be the bare minimum for some projects they already had in mind. So that being, that being said, we have projects that we can do, so we recommend putting a hundred thousand more in that line item to make it a total of two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. Under street paving, we, in the original budget, put in two hundred thousand dollars. Ethan asked for another two hundred thousand, so a total of four hundred thousand dollars in paving for the new year. So that's built into the budget. Probably getting a cart ahead of the horse here, because we've got something down in the line item for revenue review, but Airport had asked for forty thousand dollars in anticipation that I think that that would be approved, because that is a recommendation from Revenue Review to give them an additional twenty thousand for a total of forty thousand dollars to the airport. I put that in the budget too. And then like I noted before, the three hundred seven washes out the three hundred seven at the top. That leaves three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to go towards other things that you so choose. So I, I put that in council contingencies. Notes I have to say with that, just to heads up on it, I, the council's well aware of it, but just, just a reminder, first of all, I wanna say why we came into the year with so much money. We've been pretty careful with our money for once, but we also had contractors being a, I think I mentioned that before. We collected from a large project more money, and we adjusted the budget to take care of that, but we still ended up collecting more money, about thirty-eight thousand more than we budgeted. Property taxes, we collected fifty-four thousand dollars more than we budgeted. Building permits, thirty-one thousand dollars more than we budgeted. After-school fees, that was quite a bit more than we budgeted, just close to a hundred thousand. And then there was some fiber installation right of ways, twenty-one thousand. We also had, oh, and under expenditures, we had a contingency in there of a hundred and five, we didn't expend. Paving. Due to the weather, we were paving right up to basically June 30th, but there was a hundred and two thousand dollars left on the table there. Fire salaries, you know, they had a firefighter leave them in January, and so that left, that's part, all of these are contributing to this. Fifty-nine thousand dollars was left in fire salaries. Then we have fire capital, ninety-three thousand dollars. We've been waiting and waiting for the apparatus to arrive, and it's not here yet, so we, we hope to get it this month. I hope we did too. Police salaries, fifty-nine thousand. Matt, last year, he dealt with an officer leaving in January twenty-four, two officers left in November, one officer, one of those that left came back in March, then we replaced one of them in April, and so that left some gaps of paying up for staff. So fifty-nine thousand there. And then CAC salaries, the full-time person left in August, and we have been paying a part-time person and just increased their wages because they're doing an excellent job. So we had some left on the table there, so that's why we ended up with what we did, and you should be proud of yourselves, in my opinion. So we'll see.
Just, just to be clear, so the three fifty-one you have for council contingency, that hundred and five from last budget is part of that, correct?
Yeah. Yes. Well, we don't roll that over typically, you know, we, but in this case, you could invest and say, yes, we've done that. Remind you that JV has an apparatus that, to refurbish, just, just so you know this too, and he's getting quotes back on that. The first quote he's got on that is three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. We also need an AC unit at the theater, we're kinda trying to hold off because the seats are paid off next year, but it's been causing us more issues. That may be something you have to address. The unit that's up there is the original unit when the building was a bar. That one unit in the main hall is the only original unit, and it's beginning to cause us issues. And, there's something else I need, I don't know what it was. That's about it, that's, oh, Strawberry Festival, we did not put anything in there, but then, because they're always late and turn in in their twenty-six years, so I don't know if you want that allocated in here, or if you want to wait, or if you want them to put in the report and then us allocate.
So I'm, I'm sitting here thinking about the best way forward for, because this is a little unusual that we have this much in contingency.
We had to cut our budget two years ago.
Yeah. So we're, now we're seeing the fruits of that labor a little bit, especially, well, you can't, you can't, you can't guarantee, we never know when more contractor BNO is gonna come in. We never know when the, when the ad valorem is gonna be increased. We never know that what people are planning as far as projects, you know, for, for building permits and whatnot. So, you know, yes, our, our budget got a little smaller, but then we have, we've seen more revenue because of just projects being done in, around the city. So I'm wondering if it either makes sense to do one of two things. One, should we, should we hold a special meeting and call it a budget session, like what we do in, in February, but, but have a session where we, we have one line item on the agenda, and that is just to look at where we could, what, what projects need done, what, what do we wanna see take place? Or do we take it to the Revenue and Expense Review Committee and have council submit ideas and, and project requests to that, and then bring it back to City Council for consideration? I'm, I'm thinking about what's the best way forward here that's the most streamlined.
Yeah. You can do that, but you'll have to approve a budget tonight with that contingency that you-
No, I understand that. I'm thinking ahead of, because just letting it sit in contingency, that doesn't do the community really any good. What, what does that look like as far as physical improvements to the, to the city?
I think both decisions are good.
I like the idea of the council meeting having a budget discussion, and that way, you've got, both council has an opportunity to discuss it and, and just direct it, it's not a two-step process then.
Right.
Yeah, if it goes to the Financial Revenue Committee, it's gonna bounce back to City Council for approval anyways.
It will, right.
So I'd say a special meeting with City Council. I'd be wholeheartedly with my compatriot over there. It's hard to say.
That's why the merit between us.
And I, and I agree with that too. I think because there's not a specific request on the table for this, that's where, that's what we use Revenue and Expense Review Committee for. This is, this, this is really almost the same as, as our general fund budget discussions that we take, that take place in, in February. So let's, let's put a, let's put a date on the calendar as to when we can have a special meeting. That way we can have an agenda out in an appropriate timeframe, because it will be a public meeting.
So it's like a budget working session?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At which the council has the ability to take action at that time, because it is a public meeting and there will be an agenda, or it can, it can make a recommendation to the, to the next council meeting.
To just be clear, what, we're looking at that contingency amount. Everything else, unless we decide, like tonight, we're, we're looking at putting two hundred thousand more in paving. Could that change?
No, if, you can add more. I mean, you, if you wanna change it, you need to change it now, so Ethan will know what to do.
I understand. So, so the amount that we would be meeting about with the-
Contingency.
The contingency. The three hundred fifty-one thousand.
Right, okay, right.
That's good.
They have, and you have to, by law, make revisions to use that money, so that's-
Right, yeah.
That's particularly sound.
And just for a little clarification on Street Department projects and street paving, does the line item say that that was, paving was included in some of the Street Department project line item too, or?
No, paving is paving.
It's separate.
It's probably just kinda skewed because I had to wrap, had to wrap the test.
Okay.
But no, projects are like sidewalks or anything else.
Unification trees, things like that.
The note over to the right just kind of threw me off a little, because it's a bare minimum, a hundred and sixty-five million.
That's for the projects.
That's for the paving.
Yeah. The paving is, the paving total is four hundred thousand.
Correct. And this goes back to what Mayor Skinner said earlier this year, but, you know, we, we work on a budget, and then the Street Department kinda gets what's open. You know, there could be not a designated stream of income for it, so this gives us an opportunity to go back, a, as you heard him say, Brad said that the bare minimum with the one sixty-five to, to get through the project that we keep directing them to do, we're looking at them and it's kinda getting them.
Well, they're, they're a little different too. I mean, they're more fluid than-
Right.
You know, you know what the police department's doing, you know what the fire department's doing. Street Department projects, they could have a fifty thousand dollar project that'll fit in the budget, and then they might need a two hundred thousand when they're, when we're gonna do that one.
Yeah. And we've got a large street project that we'll be looking at. I've met with Ethan and, and, and outside contractor. Pocahontas Street is, is going to be a, a significant project for two blocks to drastically improve that area, create curbs, widen the street a little bit. Sidewalks are being worked on, on that street right now, so that's, that's gonna be a major improvement area of the city.
Well, that was General Fund, and I, I'd look, it's on the, it's on the agenda separately from Coal Tax. Coal Tax is pretty simple.
He's sitting in the middle of the crossing.
Yeah.
Okay, so does anyone have any questions or comments regarding what we need to do tonight, which is approve the, a budget revision, which is required for the first meeting of the July, of the, of the new fiscal year, so the first meeting in July, we must perform a budget revision, which Andy has put in front of us this evening for our consideration. Are there any questions or comments relative to what you've been, you've looked at just Hearing none, I entertain a motion that, and this is a resolution, that we approve Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-five dash zero four, General Fund Budget Revision Number One of the Twenty Twenty-five, Twenty Twenty-six Fiscal Year.
Second.
Motion by Randy, second by Jack. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. Motion carries, and I will defer to Mr. Sanders for the roll call.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders, I'm second. Mr. Sanders votes yes. Ms. Buckler's absent, Ms. Rigger?
Yes.
Ms. Zuliani?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
I don't see Mr. Thomas's name on here, Andy.
Oh, you know what? There was five lines on it, you'll be added.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
I thought it was a little light when I looked down there.
Yeah, sorry.
Did I get everybody?
Get even with the later end.
Okay, so that, that budget revision has passed, and now the second budget revision, but this is still budget revision number one under the Coal Tax line item, but it's Resolution Number Twenty-five dash oh five.
Yes, Coal Tax is a whole separate fund, but you still have to do a revision for it, it follows the same rules as General Fund as far as the Auditor's Office is concerned. Again, we, we estimated our balance on hand to be a thousand dollars, because we wanted to try to spend as much of that money for projects as we could. Again, I think some of the weather kind of hindered some of this from getting accomplished. So we ended up with forty thousand five hundred thirteen, so we need, that's a difference of thirty-nine thousand five twelve that we need to add to the new budget. There's one line item, it's, Coal Tax is basically designated for Street Department use. So thirty-nine thousand five twelve in that budget, it already had sixteen thousand, makes a total of fifty-five thousand five twelve for that line item in Coal Tax.
Okay. And so that could be discussed as well-
Yes.
-at the, at the meeting that we have.
Yes.
So in addition to the three fifty-one, we've got around four hundred thousand, a little over four hundred thousand dollars to, that we could allocate towards street, into the street area. Of that, fifty-five has to be.
Fifty, yeah, that's right. You can do whatever you want through the other.
Okay. Very straightforward. Is there a motion to approve the, the Resolution Twenty-five dash oh five relative to the Coal Tax budget revision?
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Zuliani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. Motion carries. It is a resolution, so we will go through a roll call again.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders votes yes. Ms. Buckler's absent, Mr. Rigger?
Yes.
Ms. Zuliani?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
And Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else for Andy before we let her retire for the evening? Andy, thank you, and Barb, and everybody out front who has worked on keeping the lights on for us through the changeover. We know it is a stressful time of year, but we end our fiscal year and begin a new one, so thank you for all your work.
Yep, our office does not take any leave on the last week of June, just for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is our Director of Public Works, Mr. E. C. Prost.
Good evening. Street Department, we have been working on transit alleys and getting some of those, asphalt millings on those, working on keeping those, we're gonna get through. We are getting closer to completion of the Island Avenue sidewalk project, it's been a long time coming, so we're keeping that career on until it's done, so hopefully that will be done within the next couple, three, four weeks. And then we're also continuing to work on Pocahontas Street sidewalks. Every time we think we're about done, another resident requests some more sidewalks to be done, so while we're there, we're gonna get what we can done. And then another project that's taken a little bit of time, was completed, we hung the gates today at City Park.
It looked really nice.
Yeah, they did a good job, they fabricated those and put together, or put the paneling on it and made those, you know, so that was the last thing that we did, had to do for that project. So everything's done there, backfilling, painting, nets, gates, fence, it's all completed, so. The Waste Department, we received some positive results for our second quarter testing for our new apartment. That was the, this is the first set of tests, so that was a good thing, keeping the EP happy. And we also opened bids for a new mechanic truck, and they accepted those bids, this morning at Waste Board Meeting for the Waste Department. And Sewer, we're getting close to the completion of the Island Avenue pump station. We've sent out invoices for the CMH development along Wixburg Road. That was a project that we've been on since early spring for the development of twenty-one lots. We finished that up, and we again worked on a small project on College Avenue in between there and Hucker Street, and are also beginning a fairly major upgrade on Chestnut Street for the Sewer in the area that we've had a lot of issues with. And we also received our six hundred and nineteen-page evaluation from the Test and Back for the plan. We've began reviewing it, but it's taking some time because it's six hundred and nineteen pages. So water also invoiced for the CMH project, that is part of the, those, a lot, large portion of these invoices will be refunded as houses are added, or the PSE. And we moved to swap, or they're moving along on the Mead Street upgrade, swap services there, and continuing to work with the consultants on the water treatment project. Then in code enforcement, issued one citation for accessory to structure, four citations for appearance of lot, and are working on full adjustments of permits and high grants. Then engineering, I'll briefly touch on, since Jay's here, I'll let him handle most of it, but-
No, I think he wants you to read every word. He wants to hear it. I can answer two of three.
For the tur- Um, for the Turks Gibson Library, the project meeting was held in June 25th with the board to discuss the task for Testa and the Mills Bridge to discuss how the renovation new addition will be going, they're proceeding with that process. The TAP program for Morton Avenue lighting project is on the agenda for later, I will let Jay get more detail about that one, and the West Main Street and North Locust Street sidewalk and lighting project is on there for later. The Water Department Commercial Real Estate appraisal bid, the notice of award and notice to proceed for the commercial appraisals were provided to the Nella, Van Delia Real Estate out of Huntington, I believe, and those appraisals shall be completed by July 28th for the bidding documents. For FEMA and the Western Virginia Emergency Management Division, we're looking at some grant applications for the Taylor Street storm sewer that would allow construction from the Buchanan River down by Wood Street to Route 20. It's approximately 2,000 feet of 24 and 54 inch diameter HDP storm pipe, it's got some board tracks under the rail where it is a very complex project and highly expensive project, so hopefully we can get some money to help with that. The only thing that I'll mention about the TAP applications that is relevant to these reports, some of those projects require, well, not some, they require funding, so we can use some of that additional 100,000 street projects towards that funding, uh, for the match, it's a 20% match and about 20% matches, so that's something that I would be suggesting to the contingency fund, never we get to that, but I think that's all I have and we'll let Jay read the rest of it.
Okay. Any questions for Ethan?
So you're here tonight to tell us City Park renovations are complete?
Yeah, it's complete.
There you go.
It's a relief.
Very good.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's, while we're on all these subjects, uh, if Jay wants to go ahead and, uh, we can talk about Morton Avenue and Route 20 North.
Well, all the budget revisions and everything that's going on, and that's partly why I needed to bring that to you all, because the second phase of the applications for both of the TAP, uh, projects are due July 23rd and which, and I just wanted to bring it, make you all aware of it, to see if you all wanted to proceed with this, it would be for the construction of these two projects. Uh, we'll start with, it's the last two pages of your packet, it was nice and fortunate that you can look at them, it's the last two pages. We'll talk about the North Locust Street project first, and that would create a sidewalk and lighting project similar to all of our gateways, this is called Gateway North, and it would take us from the crossroads intersection, which is Walmart, to, up along the western side of US Route 20 to the Lowe's, the southernmost of the First Lowe's entrance. Uh, the estimated cost of that project is 728,195 dollars, and because it's an 80/20 split, the city would be responsible for 145,639 dollars. Um, it's a little tricky, I've got some site meetings scheduled with Charleston and Weston Engineering Departments because we have to cross, uh, the exit and on-ramps, um, at the, um, Main Street, oh, sorry, the second or the Philippi exit, but that's what we're looking at, and I bring this again to your attention because I need to know when you all have your special budget meeting, if you all want to pursue this application any further, because, uh, it's, it's the costly one, it's the 145,000 dollars. I don't think that we would have to have, and this is where Ambi can chime in, I don't expect a decision until December or January on these projects, so we're halfway through the year.
Jay, that's going to be a two-year project, isn't it?
Yes.
So the flow, if you tap and have it from...
Right, so, and again, it's just a timing thing, but I just don't know, um, because the, the second part, the next two weeks, is going to take some effort on my time, if that's what you all choose to do. Um, but that's the North Locust Street exit, the nice and easy one, and of course, this is just as we've done with the, uh, last gateway projects, the street department, depending on their schedule, and I'll defer to Ethan and Bradley, if they can, you know, schedule those projects within the next two years, because once we get voted to proceed from the state, uh, we do have two years to complete the project. The West Main Street, North Locust Street project, or what we like to refer to as the mural wall project, it's just a small one, it's, um, 200 feet in length, and it's just a construction of sidewalks, three streetlights and a landscaping or greenscaping, uh, greenscape feature that the DOH and Weston would love to see, because they do not like that 200-foot open area from the stoplight to Huffman Lane. This has been on the books for a while, but, um, when we had our site meeting a couple of years ago, they said, oh, fine, but we, we need to make sure that that's what, um, you know, and Ethan's checking with Community Care if they're still on board, because the previous property owner was all on board, which was David, was Davis Health, they were all for this project, and we have not had a chance to speak with, um, Community Care, and I'm going to have to ask Ethan to, uh, see if he can schedule a meeting with all the two of us and Community Care within the next week and a half, so that we can determine if they're still on board. But it would create a raised curb, so that the only point of entrance and exit would be at the Huffman Lane, which is what the DOH would really like to see, because, uh, you know, and it's designed, I've done all the turning movements and everything, the garbage trucks come back in there, the, uh, the, the box trailers for supplies, uh, come back in there, load, turn around through the parking lot, but, uh, the sketch on it is the very last page, and it just shows you some schematics and, excuse me, what we were thinking that Dixie could do with some low-growing shrubs and trees. Uh, the color version is in your old electronic packet, but it didn't show up very well on, you know, the black and white. But the cost of this project is 129,000, I couldn't get rid of those two dollars, Randy, 129, two, uh, of which the city would be responsible for 25,800 and 40 cents, and again, we would have two years to complete that project, so it's not nearly as big, uh, you know, if I was going to ask for one, that would be the easy, low-hanging fruit, so that, until you all can decide what's going on with, with the budget now, but just be aware of the fact that if both of them are approved, or if you all at your next city council meeting decide to submit on only one or both of them, that is totally up to you and it does not matter to me, we will have two years when they drop the flag.
To me, this is the no-brainer, just simply because it's visible, and two, it's a, it's a larger safety hazard than people realize. When you, when you are driving south on Locust Street and people get into that left-hand turn lane and they want to go to Community Care, they just whip in at any given space within that open channel, and if you're walking from Omaromas, if you're walking out of Community Care, I've seen people almost get hit by just people whipping into that parking lot, this would close that off and you'd have to enter through Huffman Lane.
Yes.
Uh, to me, this, this is, it's, it's less expensive, it's more visible, and it's a safety issue, to me, that's the no-brainer.
Well, Alan Ford is the first project to... Well, that, that was on, um, you know, I was asked to design that, come up with a couple of options for that, uh, when Jerry was still here, and so, uh, you know, I've just worked into it. As the mayor knows and as Ethan knows, we were going to go out Morton Avenue first. We've encountered some issues with a couple, well, one of the property owners, so the DOH, and it was called, and it's still Gateway North, Dave, but that was going to be the first phase from, from Route 20 to First Street along Morton Avenue to allow a, a nice, easy connector, and the, the phase that I'm presenting to you all tonight was the second phase, but the DOH said, well, you know, if, and maybe once this project happens, the phase that I'm talking about now, then the, the property owner may change their mind and allow, uh, us to proceed through a small portion of their property, uh, along Morton Avenue, but that, um, I don't know where it came, Ambi, can you offer anything on that?
I think I have to do a lot with the aesthetics, and when you come into town, you come into this beautiful town and the gateway into it is, is not, it is...
Yeah, because there's nothing there, Dave, now, except for a grief, a very short sidewalk from, um...
You can walk out that way.
Number One Autos across the bridge to the, the, the former Dairy Queen site at, at Morton Avenue, that's the only sidewalk that exists, and so, um, that's where we are. But in total, you know, it would be a, I have it here, we can add those two numbers, but since I have it, if we did, if we submitted both projects and they were both approved, we're looking at 171,439 dollar commitment, but with everything that was said tonight, I'm going, huh, so, um, I'll leave that all up to you, but, um, I just need to know if you want to pursue the one, as the mayor said, seems like a no-brainer, if you want to do both of them, because they are both due June 23rd, and since I didn't put it as an actionable item, it was just for information tonight, and it ties in very nicely with your old special budget meeting, uh, as long as it's before the 23rd.
23rd, yes, July.
Any thoughts or comments from, uh, members of city council on these projects?
I'm all for the smaller. Just with the fact that it is Route 20, uh, you're focusing everything on, what is it, such a thing, forgot the...
Huffman Lane.
You're focusing everything there on Huffman, I would just like to make sure that it's wide enough.
I think that, this will drastically improve the aesthetics coming into, and, and it will be visible from both the Main Street exit approach to downtown, as well as from the Locust Street approach into downtown as well.
While you're there, if we could swing back to Ethan, who are in engineering.
Yeah, that's where I am.
Okay, Western EMD Taylor Streets, uh, storm sewer grant application.
Yes.
Can, I, I don't know that all of council is, is familiar, I don't want to go down a big rabbit hole here, you know, but, but, uh, what problems we've had over there and is this something that looks possible, feasible?
Well, uh, you know, FEMA, the, my project manager for the generators called and said, hey, Jay, there's some project money out there for, for stormwater, um, there's going to be multiple, uh, municipalities and counties probably applying for it, but a project two years ago was funded in its entirety for just under 4 million dollars. The bad part about this is, is if we've all read about Mr. Trump's policy and feelings towards FEMA, um, in the past, because we were a distressed county and a low-income county, uh, we, we could be anticipated to contribute anywhere from zero to 10%. Uh, it was zero on the generators and then a Tinnerton Booster Station was a, a 10% match, however, he had indicated that as the current state of economy is today, we would probably want to plan for the full 25% non-federal share matching, which is 1.05 million dollars. If this goes out to a contractor, they're going to have that done within a year, a year and a half, so we would have to have that 1 million dollars set aside and readily available. Ethan can chime in, but I don't know if we have the equipment to, to handle some of the larger stuff, so he's shaking his head, so I'm anticipating this is going out, Randy, but, uh, I have until November to get this one in, and that's currently what I was working on, because this week, after I was working on the two TAP programs for the last three applications, uh, this week has been solely devoted towards this, because I, I want to have a good handle on this, so that I can present it to, uh, the sanitary, at the sanitary board meeting in two weeks.
But there's still other options that are less expensive.
Yes, this is the worst case.
Right.
This is a contractor doing it all, you know, but if, as we had from the February flooding events, we've come up with some solutions, you know, we're looking at the 2 million dollar projects, just under a 2 million dollar project, if we go halfway, that still doesn't get us under the railroad track. Right, Ethan?
Yeah, that includes...
Oh, you, you included the, uh, in your preliminary estimate? So, uh, we could do half of the project for two, most of that we could do in-house, um, but I don't know if you want to go for funding for that. I can phase this application, you know, do the lower half first, the upper half, when I'm saying, and, and Camden Avenue being the separator, from the river to Camden would be the lower half, which is what we had proposed anyway, and then, um, you know, maybe a couple of years down the road, or next year, apply for the upper half, which is from Camden to Route 20. There's multiple ways to do it, but I'm filling out the worst case, which is everything, and then I can just hit delete and drop items as they're chosen. Right. Any other questions?
Question?
Uh, sure, Dennis.
Can we go back to the Huffman Lane for a moment? I'm a little confused. Is Huffman Lane that alley between Community Care and that medical building?
Yes.
It connects, it connects North Canola Street to North Locust Street, yes.
Okay, my question is, is Huffman Lane big, big enough to handle two-way traffic?
It's one-way, it, it will always be one-way, because when it exits onto North Canola Street, the, the, the passage is only one car wide.
Right.
So it, it, unless we tear buildings down, which that's not happening, um, the, the street will always be a one-way.
I'm also thinking of the, uh, the big van that comes in there, like, for, uh, uh, cancer testing. It parks in there, in that, that area. Is they, are they going to be able to handle that too? With the new configuration?
Is it a box trailer? Is it a single-axle box trailer?
No, sir. It's a tractor trailer.
Bonnie's bus.
Yes, that's it.
Bonnie's bus.
Bonnie's bus.
Does this move from the hospital, or is there...
It's there periodically.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure they're using that large, that have not accounted for a, uh, you know, Bonnie's bus trailer, I mean, it's a full-size tractor trailer. Yes.
I mean, it, it fits in there now, so...
Well, yeah, but I'm assuming he uses that entire open lot he can turn in along the 200 feet that we're going to not have there. There are curbs on it. But, um, yes.
That may need to be discussed when a meeting is held with Community Care.
The DOH and Community Care, because...
Technically, currently, if there's nobody parked in those eight, nine spaces, you have a full width...
Yeah, but my, my, I can see now, I can envision that he's coming in early in the morning or whatever, Scott, and just turning left and using that entire parking lot to make his turn and get oriented, and, you know, that won't be there, you know, the DOH is ecstatic that it's going to be eliminated, so, and it's on their right of way, you know, I'll make sure that this entire, yeah, but we've got to make some accommodations.
That's a script from Community Care, here for his other options.
I mean, they have multiple sites, you know, they have that site... What's the next alley that we were just down, Vincent? Uh, Ethan? Seneca? It's the one by the senior center, you know, there's that one.
Senior Lane.
Okay, Senior Lane, they, they have space there, uh, but, yeah, we'll, we'll pick that up in the meeting, that, that's a good catch, but, um...
Even though it's a one-way street, there shouldn't be any reason that western section of it could be wider to accommodate for that.
Can I ask something?
I don't know, what tractor trailer? Pass somewhere, yeah, I mean, it's got to be parked.
What, okay, or the arch, arch street, and which one's that? The, the West Virginia's, big painting on the wall there, what street is that?
Locust and Main.
Okay, and then the next one up is Canola?
Canola goes in front of, uh, the, the five-story building and in front of the Alps Lodge, and, yes, it's parallel.
Okay, when I ride my bike through there, my memory right now says, I got, if I cut through there, there's a, a one, one-way sign stuck to the wall there that says, if I go through there, I'm going the wrong way. Right, it, it is... But when you get up to Van Delia, you have to go out the other way, it's one-way, that way, so somewhere in the middle, it splits. It, it does, Huffman is unique, Huffman is one-way from 20 or North Locust to North Canola that way, but to enable Davis Health and Community Care, uh, to, to get into their lots, uh, but you, if you were coming from North Canola or, which is, you know, where the barber shop, Jimbo's and all that is, it is not, that is, you know, you are prohibited from entering that direction. Right. Yeah, it's, it's a split one-way. Halfway in the middle, it goes a different way. Yeah, but it's not two lanes wide, it, it is still one lane wide. That's freak me out, I was about to... Yes. But that was because of, um, the traffic to Davis Health and to, uh, Community Care.
Yeah, it was, it was to, it was to create an ability for people to release congestion through there, people could go out either way.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, we will get a meeting scheduled with Community Care to, uh, get their blessing on this and see if that would be an issue, but, um, do we need to formalize anything motion-wise, uh, this evening? There are two line items on the agenda, the Locust Street Sidewalk and Lighting Project Grant Application and the West Main Street, North Locust Street Intersection Sidewalk Lighting Grant Application. As Jay noted, there are deadlines.
Those are contingent upon our discussions at the budget meetings.
Right, and Community Care, so we shouldn't take action tonight, but we do need to have an action taken before... but we do need to have an action taken before July 23rd.
Right, right.
Perhaps we can have these on that, that special budget meeting.
Yeah, oh, that's what I was anticipating as an additional line item.
If you make sure to remind people that's for the mayor.
Yep, because if we don't want to pursue one, I don't want to, you know, work on it any further. You know, at this time, we can always catch it up the next time. All right. More questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jay.
All right.
All right, under, back to the Public Works Director's report. We have the Report of Zoning and Code Enforcement, Approval of Building and Wiring Permits. Would you join me in, I noted, would you join me in approving those, please, by a motion? Motion by Scott, is there a second? Second by Rob, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, noting Mr. Rager's extension. All right. Vincent, does he want to speak to anything this evening?
No, he just came and asked questions about.
He looks like he always leaving the building.
That's perfectly fine.
Did everyone else leave what he learned?
Okay, up next is Fire Chief JB Kimble.
Mr. Thomas, I'm glad we made it dress down Polo tonight.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, look good today. He always picks them, you know. Real quick, I want to reflect on something that happened earlier in the week. On June 30th in Idaho, an individual lit a wildland fire, which drew in the fire department. And the two battalion chiefs that arrived on scene first were killed immediately by him shooting them. And he shot another firefighter. This has rocked the fire service. You know, I get up there and speak a lot about things are different nowadays, they're different. When somebody wants to throw in a bunch of firemen and shoot them, the world's different. And I just want to say our prayers, you go out to the fire service in Idaho and to their families. So that being said, you know, that would be, that's a tragedy that should never happen, so. In your packet, you can look, there's activity through the month of May. We responded to 474 incidents throughout the year to date through May. And I went back over a few years just to give you a summary of where we're at. We're at 474 in 2025. In 2024, we are 429. In 2023, we're at 447. In 2022, when we had our highest volume, call volume at the end of the year, we were at 489. So we're right around there. We're up 45 calls from last year, 45 incidents. Now, over the last two days, we've had 15 incidents, so it's been, it's been very busy. So I want to reflect on some incidents we had in the last week or so directly relating to flooding. We've been having some rare downpours in our communities. A couple of weeks ago, Hodgeville had four inches of rain in a period, a short period of time. The other night, we had, I think it was three and a half inches of rain within like 50 minutes. And the fire department saw flooding in places we'd never seen flooding before. People were getting stuck in their cars, you know, people were stuck, I think we're driving their apartments, stuff like that. But I really want to relate on to the people in America in the test of this. I think some people go out just to see what's going on. First off, you're getting in the way of the first responders trying to get to people that are stuck in the water, which we have to get them out. And second of all, when you drive through water at the triangle or in front of somebody's house, you create a wake. And that wake goes inside that person's house or business and does more damage. Be respectful to people. If the street's flooded, stay out of the water. You can't tell if a manhole has been flipped by the force of the water. If you're driving along and you're driving that manhole, if you're out walking in that floodwater, you could fall in that manhole and then you're gone. So just be respectful. The other night, we were out from about 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock in the morning. It's just people out wanting to drive through water. And it just gets very irritating sometimes. And I just, I don't see what's, what they get out of it, so.
Well, the radio tells you not to do that.
Yes, yes. We're told to do a lot, not do a lot of stuff, including some of the, but anyhow. Moving on fireworks, tomorrow night, we'll go and, when they prep the site for the fireworks, take my pictures. Since I signed the fireworks permit, I'm responsible for it. So I want to make sure the gentleman, he's, he's a class act. He does a real good job of putting fireworks off. I just want to make sure everything's prepared and safe, so. And if you're putting fireworks off at your residence, please be respectful to your neighbors and your neighbor's dogs and stuff like that. I spoke to the firehouse the other day, when, when we were down in Florida for my daughter's softball games, we went to a drone show. And I tell you what, if you ever want to replace a fireworks show, a drone show would be an amazing thing to see, 800 drones at one time doing stuff. It just, plus the animals aren't scared of it, so just something to think about. Air packs, as Ambi spoke, tentatively, they're supposed to be scheduled, our SEVAs are supposed to be delivered, scheduled to be delivered the third week of this month. We do have fit testing for our facepieces next week. So every member will have their own individual facepiece that's fitted for them. That's part of NFPA standards. And that way, when you go into a bad atmosphere, it's sealed to your face, not, it's not just a general medium, large, it's fitted for you, so. As Ambi said, Engine One, we've had two companies come in and look at Engine One. I'm waiting on the third to just make sure we're all in line price-wise and get the best, best value if we can. So I was at the Consolidated Public Works meeting the other day. We talked about incident action plans. Those have been completed or have, our meetings have been completed. We met with the Fourth of July group that did, and the car show group came and we met with them. So those are very positive things. That way everybody gets on the same page. So if there is an incident at the activity or we have to go through the activity to get to an incident, everybody knows what's going on, so. Just a little something I'd like to go back on, and I hate to rip a Band-Aid off. We had an incident the other night, we were dispatched to three Lathan.
Lightburn.
Lightburn, sure, I'm sorry, I didn't say Lathan. And when we get there, it's not three Lightburn, it's like three, three and a half.
A.
A, whatever. We, and then across from that is an apartment building that's facing the same alley that has a Central Street address. So the other day, we responded to Lurdrive. One side of Lurdrive was like 30 some Lurdrive and the left-hand side was, you know, 274. So one side of Lurdrive is in the county, the right-hand side of Lurdrive is in the city. It's, it's, we're running into some confusion when we go down College Avenue, the new buildings, the college had built have county addressing, so they have, you know, like a 300 or 400 number. The right-hand side of the road has a two-digit number. So it's just confusing and just like the Lightburn, if the proper display is not on the place and it's not reflective, it makes it very difficult. So I'd just like for council to think about that and what's like in approving our address and the mapping and stuff.
It does need done. I, I agree with you. It is a mess. You come, it's just, and it's not just what you noted, I mean, it's just all over the place.
Especially with the alleys, the half apartments and the half, you know, it just, like you said, it's confusing. And the last thing I want to do is be confused when somebody's approaching. Typically, somebody will look at you, say, is the house on fire? You're going to see it. Not everything we respond to is on fire, so.
Right, and not everything's visible.
No, no. But that being said, you know, just, I'd like to set something up sometime to discuss that as we can. And furthermore, as we're doing that, I'd like to sit and talk about the first duty fire fee. I know we've all been emailing each other back and forth about the city fee and looking at spreadsheets and stuff like that. I think that's something we need to.
One thing I'll follow up on that, David, we'll get you some copies so you can have someone to go through them with you. But we've provided the rest of council with spreadsheets of the in-town, in Buchanan commercial buildings with square footage, using the CAD square footage that Jay provided. And Jay put a lot of time and effort into it, the front office out there put a lot of time and effort into it. And we've been, we've been able to provide everyone with a model of 5 cents per square foot, 7 cents per square foot, 9 cents per square foot. Councilman Randall was able to catch me and the chief the other day and ask some great questions. So I'd, I'd challenge the rest of council too to do the same thing, start compiling your questions for the mayor, for the, for the chief. I've been working a lot on it so that we can move quicker on this thing because we have to get the model in place, which we committed to doing, to go away from, from gross revenue on businesses to square footage for the property that we own. Before, we can take that model and ask for it to be implemented in the county of the first two fees. We have to get our house in order first, number one. Number two, I'll distribute, Jay and Ambi worked on a series of questions that they had for the internal purposes of how to classify certain things. I'll distribute that to everybody too so that you can give feedback to the mayor, to all of us, because those are questions to be answered. But we have to be proactive on this. I mean, you know, it's one thing to kick that can down the road, but at times I can't just stand still, you know, so we, we've, the mayor's asking me to help, you know, with some of this stuff with the chief and compiling data and so forth. We're pretty well down the road on that, so, you know, redistribute those, just ask everybody for internal discussions and see if we can get a little bit closer to moving from, and I, and I, I said initially, I mean, I worked out of a 1,600 square foot house when I was operating my pages. My gross income was good. And if I'd have been charged on that versus the small square footage I had, I would have been like, wait a minute, this is, you know, whereas somebody else had had 100 times the square footage I had, but less gross income, because they're very small, they just haven't had a lot of square footage, you know, so I think we need to make that happen.
Well, I think philosophically, you're exactly right. We, we've, the likelihood of having a fire or a catastrophe of any kind has really nothing to do with what the business brings in revenue-wise. But the footprint, the physical footprint of the building has a lot more to do with how severe an incident could be. So that, and it just takes the subjectivity completely out of it. The building's square footage is the building's square footage. It is absolute. It's not, it's really not up for debate or, or any gray area. If it's 1,600 square feet, it's 1,600 square feet.
Yep. Statistically, the first five years of the business, you're going to be in the negative. You're going to lose money. And can you go off gross income?
Are you a statistician?
You better believe it.
So you're saying we'd be bad?
I just wanted to, I wanted to just remind council that, you know, it's better for you, you know, if you do it on an individual basis, you get.
I got, you know, I can meet evenings and.
And Jay can ask a lot of questions.
And I, I had previously got information from the county and I had a spreadsheet of that. And for some reason, there was two of the largest businesses were in it. But when I calculated the square footage in all those businesses, without the two largest, you're looking at about 2.4 million square feet out in the county. If you add those two largest businesses in, you're only going to just over 3 million square feet of commercial space outside the city.
That's information we need to have. We can't do a thing until we get our house.
Well, square footage is just cost.
Yes, we've got to get our house in order and then we can move forward with that.
Well, and I do want to note too, that, I mean, there was a method to the madness back when the gross revenue was created. Remember, we didn't have the, technology has come such a long way in giving us the ability to determine square footage. We have the, we have the GIS mapping system now that was not available, you know. So a lot of cities did it the way we do it. It's, but there's a, there's a better mousetrap now, so.
I sent Randy one other day where, I can't remember which city it was, but they defined like, if it was three rentals over top of business, it was commercial space. If it was less than two, that you're per moving unit.
Those are the questions that we've got to answer. I mean, I've got my opinion on them. You know, don't want to go down a rabbit hole now. Every council member should have their opinion on it. On how, you know, where does it trigger, where does it become a commercial piece of property versus half-commercial, half-residential, you know, this and that. So those are the things that we just need to hammer out and keep it simple.
Any questions, Mayor? I have one. Andy mentioned a quote for 371, an apparatus.
So that's Engine One.
Oh, that is.
That's the '09 Model Suffolk. So when I, we were in budget sessions, we talked about, I mean, when you look at the 2021 Model Engine 11 that we bought for 540 X dollars, that truck today is 1.2 million. So, you know, as you go down the road, since Engine One's still in decent shape, you know, and it's got 15, 16 years of wear on it, you know, there's things that we need, you know, radiator needs painted, needs new seats, the seats are just shot in, you know, but it does, doesn't need pulled off the frame and a new chassis put under. So you're looking, and when I, we were in budget sessions, I estimated about $400,000 for that. So that's just one estimate. We're still waiting. That was a Pierce company. We're still waiting on Suffolk and SVI to give us estimates also.
She just said apparatus. I wasn't paying attention. Thank you.
Questions?
Question. Going back to Idaho, if this would become a trend, would protective vests for the fire department?
At this point in time right now, every fire we respond, like a little bit ago, we had a fire at Burger King. And the city police officers responded to that. They're dispatched automatically. They're dispatched automatically in the county. Now, after midnight, law enforcement is not as available out in the county to respond, you know, because they may be in Rock Cave and we're out here. And I think that's just something we've always taken, taken for granted that, you know, nobody's going to shoot us. But in today's world, that happens, you know, people get beat, people get shot, people get ran over. It's a different world and.
That's the first time I can remember this happening.
No, it happened in Florida seven months ago.
It did?
The firefighter didn't get killed. It happened in 2024 and two firemen got killed. So, I mean, it's not, I mean, God forbid.
Well, last, yesterday in Chicago, 18 people, I should. It's crazy.
And I don't know what the results of the individual doing it, what, what was the purpose of it. I don't know if he had ran and run in with the fire department. I don't know if he wanted firemen and denied.
He was killed.
Yeah, well, he did.
My question, my question is protective vest for.
It does, homeproof vest under your, other gear.
How did you come up with any more weight? That's the question.
I can't answer that. I, I still think we're in a, in a community that that's not needed. I think we're in a community that we need to be aware of our surroundings. And especially here in town with the city officers being readily available. They get there pretty quick and they take care of us. They watch our backs. So, and, you know, if, if there's not a gun involved, you know, somebody wants to throw them down, I guess we'll have to throw it down until we get out, you know, whatever, whatever we need to do. But I just, vests would be very difficult for us. Now, if you're doing, if you're going to an active shooter or something like that, it would be feasible. But if you're going to a fire, the last thing you're thinking about is putting a ballistic vest under your gear. I just.
Might be a new evolution of gear down the road, is some of these.
That's the ballistic vests that we're in, yeah.
Yeah, some fires are.
I would hate for that. But at this point in time, I would say not at this time.
Anything else for Chief Kimble?
I, I would just like to make the comment for people who are having fireworks and firecrackers at their homes in the city, what I'm concerned about oftentimes is after the Fourth of July. Some people still do it for four or five more, six days, whatever. And that's just not the right thing to do. That's not common sense.
Most house fires that are caused by fireworks are, have to do with improper discard after, after the fact. They throw them just in like a, in a plastic garbage can or, you know, and they think they're out, but they're not. And then all of a sudden, the house is on fire. It's all about properly putting them. It's all about properly putting them, the, the, the old ones into, into water, the metal bucket with water, that's, that's the key.
Most of the instances we have, as far as fire involved in fireworks, are people.
We, we, we try to keep this up here, but give, give me a second.
Try and, you know, people are doing something with fireworks, they shouldn't.
All right, Dennis?
I would like to add to that, pick up your residue from your fireworks if you play them in the yard, because if you have pets or animals come through, they could step on a sharp piece of metal or something along that order and hurt themselves, and that, that's just not right. So pick up, clean up after yourself. That's what I want to point out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right. Anything else for Chief Kimball?
Thanks, sir. Have a good weekend.
All right. Thank you, you too. All right, we've got, under old business discussions, the Revenue and Expense Review Committee has met and has some recommendations for the full body of council. This is regarding outside entity funding requests. The first, as Andy alluded to in the budget revision, the Buchanan Upshore Regional Airport Authority has asked for an additional twenty-thousand dollars in funding, so with some changes that have been made up in DC, there's less federal funding through the FAA for small regional airports. They are asking from, going from their original twenty-thousand-dollar yearly contribution amount to forty-thousand dollars. That's total, so an additional twenty-thousand dollars to the, to the Buchanan Upshore Regional Airport Authority. If you'll recall, in the, in this budget that we worked on back in February, that took, that took effect on Tuesday, there already was twenty-thousand dollars allocated. This would be an additional twenty-thousand, making it forty-thousand. Is, that is the recommendation from the Revenue and Expense Review Committee to allocate a total of forty-thousand to the, to the Regional Airport Authority. Is there a motion to approve that?
Sure.
Motion by Mr. Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zuliani, is there any discussion on that? Carry the need for none, I entertain a motion, or I'm sorry, I call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye to the BU Regional Airport Authority.
Aye.
Likes sign opposed, that motion carries. Second line item that was discussed at the Revenue and Expense Review Committee was allocating twenty-five-hundred dollars to the Leadership Upshore Program, of which the Revenue and Expense Review Committee is sending back to council a recommendation to not allocate funding to the Leadership Upshore Program for this year. That is a twenty-five-hundred dollar, that was a twenty-five-hundred-dollar request.
That's for the chamber?
Well, the chamber is tied to it, yes.
What did we give last?
Twenty-five-hundred.
Is there a reason why they don't want to do it this year?
Well, we've not received really any reports as far as who's been a part of the program, what the program curriculum has entailed, what's the success rate, and then are the employers who are putting individuals into the program, are they, what's the return on investment for them? There's just some questions out there that we've not been able to get answered.
Who are the individuals responsible for that?
Well, I mean, the, the chamber is, is kind of overseeing it, but it's, there's just kind of an ad hoc committee, and I'll tell you, so I was asked to be a part of that back when it got started, and we met several times, but it really doesn't meet anymore.
So are we going to tell them why we're not? I think that would be.
Well, I think that needs to come after this meeting. If, if the council agrees with the Revenue and Expense Review Committee's recommendation, that would be communicated to Leadership Upshore.
I would make the motion that we accept the Revenue and Expense Committee's assessment.
Okay. Is, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Rob. Any further discussion on that? Everybody's been like, right, right on it tonight as far as. Okay, I call for that question to not allocate twenty-five-hundred dollars to Leadership Upshore.
I think we should tell them why.
Well, we will.
Okay. Yay.
Aye, everybody, everybody says aye? Likes sign opposed?
Aye, aye, aye.
Motion carries. So that, the Revenue and Expense Review Committee's report has been confirmed by the city council. Moving to new business discussions, you see on B and C, as was discussed with Jay, we will not take action on those at this time. We will carry those to a future meeting, of which we, we need to have a decision made by July twenty-third, and we'll, I'll work with Teresa on Monday to schedule that meeting for us. A, I'm asking that we reschedule the city council meeting from July seventeenth to July fifteenth. We have some deadlines that we need to meet relative to the water plant discussion. There's a long list here of dates that we need to hit, starting with a recommendation to city council from the Water Board on July tenth. We need to have a, we need to have a first reading before, like, early in the week on that July fifteenth, July fourteenth through eighteenth, because then we have to have a notice given to the Record Delta based on their printing schedule for a Class II legal ad. So I'm asking that we move, instead of scheduling a special meeting for this and then turning around and having another meeting, that we just schedule our city council meeting on July fifteenth, Tuesday.
That's good.
Works for everyone?
Yes.
All right. So I entertain a motion that we, that we schedule the July seventeenth meeting on Tuesday, July fifteenth.
Sure.
Motion by Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Zuliani, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes sign opposed, motion carries. So we will advertise that to make sure everyone knows. We are down to council member comments and announcements, and so we will begin over here with Mr. Randall.
Big thanks to Andy, appreciate your hard work on the budget. I just wanted to amplify the choice to spend two-thirds of our opioid, remaining current opioid funds, the broad reach that the program affects Upshore residents of any age with that master is great, fits the mold for the, its intention very well, in my opinion. Appreciate JB and his work on the first due. I would like to continue meeting on that. I think it's important to note that the fire departments in Buchanan are not just responding to the fire rescue, and that's a very important factor considering the first due as well, specifically flooding tragedies and the big events that we're having this weekend. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, sir. As noted, Mrs. Butler is absent. Mr. Rager?
Last week, I had the opportunity to go up to the, out on Mudlick at the new fire training facility, the external facility that's being built. And of course, they do have a training facility that was donated by Loudmun County Fire Department that simulates a one-story building. And I think it was Thursday, and I think the temperature was ninety-six degrees, and I am sitting outside, and these gentlemen and ladies are putting their equipment on, and they go in and they close the doors, and they start fire. And it probably reached about a thousand degrees inside. And of course, it's just training, you know, what, what do you do, what do you not do? And I, I mean, I was very impressed, and I'm anxious for us to get the three-story building completed, put in training, and observe that. And, you know, they're just to be commended, because, you know, when they do go into a fire, they are putting themselves at risk, at the same time trying to save lives and secondly, property. And they're to be commended. And to go out on a ninety-six-degree day where the humidity was just as bad and put that equipment on and then just go into the heat was very impressive, and I think reflects a, a level of dedication that's to be admired and respected. That's about all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Thomas?
All right, towards what everybody said so far, and I would ask of people that are celebrating the two-hundred-and-forty-ninth celebration of our country, be respectful to your neighbors and their pets and other animals of other nature, and be a veteran for BTS. You know, we'll have a lot of noise tomorrow night, but they'll keep going on for three or four or five more days, but it happens all the time. And I also would like to say, I'm sure, gosh, some former neighbors of mine, Steve and Livy and Randall, have to be extremely proud of Scott and Jen, because I knew them when they were just little tiny kids. Remember that Scott, jumping on the trampoline and everything?
I do.
So that was really neat. A lot of people may not know the Jen and Scott were brothers and sisters, but they are. So y'all have a great Fourth of July and the weekend, and all be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Zuliani?
Just have a happy, safe Fourth of July.
Short and sweet. Best report ever. Mr. Sanders?
Okay, I got the city catch, record, report, remarks and announcements. Nothing. Even better report.
Way to go, man.
I'm coming advanced at the event center, brushy fork. Want to remind everybody that July twelfth through the twenty-seventh is the annual Western Army National Guard Summer Drill, so they'll have the entire complex for those two and a half weeks. And then we'll come back August fifteenth, host St. John's Hospital and Rotary for the blood drive. And then we do take a six-week break, because from August eighteenth through September thirtieth, no events will be held for a complete renovation of the parking area, parking lot out at the event center and the readiness center for the Army National Guard. They're going to reline the concrete lot that's already there, instead of the straight-in parking that's kind of awkward now, they're going to diagonal park. They're building new entrances to the new side that's nearing completion, and they're going to pave everything else that's out there, so there will be no more gravel. It'll all be paved all the way up to the highway. I spoke with the superintendent, all that job, that is a locked-in date to paving, they will not change that. He said some of his crews are running ahead, others are kind of lagging behind. They have till December, I learned, to finish that project, not counting the emergency days. But, you know, we're getting closer and closer and closer all the time. But once we get everything paved out there, it's going to make all of our events that we host much, much better, so we have a lot of things that it works for later on. And I'll just, as far as remarks, Dave, I think it's the two-hundred-fiftieth birthday, isn't it?
No.
Seventeen, seventy-three?
No, two-forty-nine is, we're starting the two-fiftieth.
Are we? Okay, all right, we'll work on that one, feather that one out. Katie having a, Katie, no, you have an opinion?
Well, it's, it's.
That's okay, Dave, I'm just.
It's going on, man, you're in all sorts of tubes.
Yeah, okay.
Two-forty-nine.
That, that, that's correct then. I think that's it for me then. I'm thinking of something else, but it went right out of my head. All right.
All right. Dennis, I'm sorry you got some water last week.
I needed a bath anyway.
It, you know, it amazes me that people jump to blame the city for these type of events. It is abnormal to receive three and a half inches of rain in thirty-five minutes, but we did. It is abnormal to see what has taken place in Wheeling and in Fairmont, but it happened. I can, I can tell you, I've spoken with Jay, I've spoken with Ethan, we could have, we could completely overhaul the culvert and drainage system in this town, and yet still, three and a half inches of rain in thirty-five minutes is going to create issues. The way Buchanan is built, the topography of it, it doesn't lend itself to be in great shape for a large water event. One-third of the city's land and structures is, sits in the flood zone. The downtown, the lower part of the downtown, the southern half of downtown, is essentially a bowl. Main Street sits higher, Canola Hills higher, Florida Street's higher, Jawbon, the Jawbon Run is higher, and it all comes down to the triangle. And it's going to do that forever. It's done it forever, it's going to do it forever, and, and, and we could, we, in, in order to do what some people think we should do, we would need to tear down about forty houses and about thirty businesses and completely rip the land apart and put in six-foot giant culverts. And it's still going to flood, because there, it's, it's just, it's the lay of the land.
You also have moving land, you know, the college, where they were building a lot of things, they found out that there was a lot of movement within the.
That happens too. We have some, we do have some quicksand around here.
That's a real issue.
But the, but the bottom line is, climate change is a real thing, and we are seeing it. And these storms are be, are becoming more severe, they're dropping more rain, and it's going to continue. What Chief said about not driving down streets that are flooded is absolutely correct. I was out all night that night roping off streets, and I could not believe the amount of people that were out just for joyriding, wanting to drive down streets to create big waves. There are a lot of houses that sit along these streets that were getting flooded, that sit a little bit below the street. That wall of water would have just gone right into people's basements, crawl spaces, living rooms. It was already going in. It would have been waves of water going in. So let's just be mindful of our neighbors, let's try to, let's try to help each other out when those things happen. I feel bad for everyone that got flooded. My parents' neighborhood was hit. They got a little water in their garage, but, but nowhere near what, what a little bit below them received, where, where Dennis lives and the white hairs and, so.
Actually, I didn't get a whole lot in the garage, just a little bit until I shut the little door, then it stopped.
We also had sewer back those two.
Yeah, but it went across the backyard and then on down Gum Street, as it usually does.
Yeah. The white hairs, I got it again.
I get.
I feel bad for them.
Yeah, I feel bad for them.
But it could have been worse had, had it, had the street, we not roped off streets when we did to keep people from, from driving through those areas, so.
I felt obligated to call it in, but I didn't have a major problem with it. But thanks for mentioning me.
Must have just looked worse than it was for you.
Yeah.
Because it, it didn't look very good. So anyway, let's just, let's just keep an eye out for each other. Have a happy Fourth of July, enjoy the fireworks, sponsored by the City of Buchanan. Have a great weekend at eight forty-eight, and there's a motion that we adjourn.
Good luck.
All right.